We just go to transportation meeting after another one. We go, Victor and I go to the monthly MPO meeting every month. Dan, Alan, and Dara, where's Dara? They go to another MPO meeting. Again, we're doing everything the right way trying to be the perfect or the model of the city. And so we do get things done in the future. And as John will joke about, we'll probably be on, he talks about being in his wheelchair. And last week at the State of the City, I talked about how far I'd be on my walker, you know, when some of this stuff, we have ribbon guns. We have to do the work now in the later. So it's been, I've heard John speak, I don't know how many times. And I thought about, I remember my name here, rest you from stalking and following around all these meetings. And I can almost tell you what he's gonna say tonight, but I wanted you to hear it direct from him. And so I just want to introduce Chad Whittenburg. Chad is our chairman of our Transportation Advisory Committee. If you didn't know, we had that. And it meets the third?
Third Monday of February.
Every month. You're invited to come to. If you want to learn more about transportation going on in the city, that'd be the perfect opportunity to come. This committee is made up of three Alderman, Alderman Fitterer, and Alderman Casey Williams. So I'm gonna turn it over to Chad, so we can get John on the floor here real soon. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome. Again, it's a pleasure for the TAC committee to host this meeting tonight. Specifically, I want to recognize some people, but before we do that, I want to draw your attention to two pieces of information. One, hopefully, everybody picked up one of these. It's just something to take home and look at. We just wanted to give you something, maybe take notes on, or to peruse some of the things that we're doing this year. It's just a couple of projects that we're focusing on. You'll notice six or seven projects on Highway 31, just trying to alleviate some of the traffic and pinch points. The other items are back there behind us. The staff did a great job, and you can peruse these after we get done tonight.
And we'll stick around.
Yeah, we'll stick around. This is our copy of our major thoroughfare plan that we've adopted this past year, and it's also all of our submittals that were submitted to the MPO. So if you want to look at some of those in a bigger setting, feel free to do that. Just want to recognize a few people real quick, and we'll get the Commissioner up here. First off, I want to recognize, of course, my committee members that served on transportation. The mayor did that. Alderman Fitterer. And I want to thank Alderman Fitterer. He helped set up a lot of this meeting, making this happen. And Alderman Casey Williams. We've also got Alderman Amy Word, Alderman Jonathan Duda. I think that's all the Aldermen that are in here. We've got our former mayor, Brandon McCullough. We've got a former Alderman, Alan Hall. He served as chairman of the Transportation Committee when it was first founded. We've got our judge, the city judge here. We've got the Thompson Station City Manager, Joe Constantini's in the house here. And we've got Williamson County Commissioner, David Pear, who's with us tonight. And we've got our state senator, Senator Henson, right up here in the front row. So all of these individuals will be sticking around this evening, answering your questions and talking about the city. Without further ado, I hand it off to, I guess it's still Williamson County resident?
Yeah, sure.
Williamson County resident?
Fast mayor of Franklin.
Franklin Mayor of Franklin, Mr. John Short.
So, appreciate it, Mayor. And Senator, thank you for coming. And one of the things that we're really just trying to do here is to educate everybody kind of what's going on in transportation in the state of Tennessee. And I find that the easiest way for me to do it is to just go out and talk. And I brought several people with me from my T-Dot staff. I'll introduce a second. And we want to answer questions. We want to let you know kind of what's going on, and we'll be glad to stick around for a little while and do the best we can. But I'm gonna start with Paul Decks. Paul, put stand up, and we'll just go down in order. Paul is a deputy commissioner and is the state's chief engineer. He knows everything there is. You can ask him about any road in the state, and he knows about it.
Yeah. I don't know, if you have a certain age, though, I think.
He's been here a long time and has been with T-Dot his whole career, and it's a privilege to have him working for us. David Lakey, well, David runs our Region Three, and he's, so Region Three is this particular area, and they're based actually in Nashville at different locations. So all construction and stuff kind of goes through him. And Joe Darian works for David and is in charge of the construction side. We've kind of divided that up, and so you'll see them out and about. And Katie Schulte is our public information officer for Region Three, and so we kind of want to do those introductions. So let's start with just the first slide and kind of talk a little bit about what's going on. And if y'all got questions during the middle, you can raise your hand. That's fine, because I'm always very casual. Amy, who used to work for me, knows that very well. So, you know, we just, ever since I've been with T-Dot now, about five years I've been talking about, we've got to get some, we've got to get long-term funding for the federal highway, and that's one of our issues. We have been under 34 short-term extensions. And so, you know, and I tell this, I'm trying to make things, so I'm a real simple person, so I have to give kind of examples of things, so I can understand. But so if you thought you were going to lose your job every six months, would you go out and buy a house? Well, you probably shouldn't. Some people might, but you probably shouldn't. And really, that's kind of how we've been for a long, long time. So, you know, every six months, we were thinking there was a possibility that we might not get funded, or we wouldn't get all the funding that we used to get. And so when you do that, you have to do a lot of things and think about your house. So if you thought you might get fired every six months, what would you probably do? Well, you don't want to spend a whole lot of money, and you want to keep money in your bank account in case that would happen. And we did exactly the same thing. And so we reduced some of our lettings to make sure that we had enough cash to pay for the projects that we already had under construction. And you also need to know, as part of this, we are a state that we're what's called a pay-as-you-go state. There's only five of them in the nation, and so we're really proud of that. And so we pay for our projects as we go along. We don't have any debt that's associated with our road program. And the state of Tennessee, which is a great thing, has the least debt per capita than any state in the nation. And the General Assembly has really been great about that. We've really managed our assets really, really well. And to think about, so across the whole nation, we have the least debt per capita. That, for us, that works out okay, but it makes it a little difficult. When we do projects, we have to divide them into smaller projects, because we don't have a whole bunch of cash. If I could go borrow, you know, a couple billion dollars, I could put a lot of stuff out, but then, you know, then we'd have to pay it back. And one of the advantages that we have by doing that is we also have the third-best roads in the nation right now. And we spend the third-least per capita in the nation. So we have the third-best roads, and we spend the third-least per person, and also the third-least per vehicle miles traveled, which I think says that we're spending our money really, really wisely.
Who says we have the third-best roads?
There's been all sorts of surveys that are done. The American Trucking Association is one of them. We've got, I can give you all that data. So there's a lot of that data out there. Some people say that we have the first, but we don't want to go with that one, so we take a conservative route and say that we have the third-best roads in this. And through just driving, if you drive our interstates and then decide to leave Tennessee and go to Alabama, or Mississippi, or Kentucky, or any other, you know immediately that you've left. So we're happy to be proud of that. And if you talk to truckers, they'll tell you that they're proud of the roads that we have on. And so, you know, that's something that we're very, very proud of. But that's kind of hard to continue as we go forward. We haven't adjusted our revenue since 1986, well, '89 actually was the last time it went into. And think about that. So, and the governor talked a little bit last night in the State address, is that we pay per gallon. That's how we pay. So you know, and the last time it's been changed was in 1989. And think of how much better mileage you're getting on your vehicle today than you were getting back in 1989, or 1990, 1995. And that's going to continue to get better. So actually, it's costing you less every day to drive on a road, because you're getting better gas mileage, because you're paying on a per-gallon basis. And that's just on cars, on trucks. Trucks 15 years ago got about four miles to the gallon, big heavy duty. Now they're getting eight to nine miles per gallon now, which means they've actually had their taxes reduced by 50% to drive on our same road. So those are some of the issues that we're dealing with. And it's also a lot more expensive to build a road, and those of you that are involved in that know that. So in 1989, and that number, it costs about $30,000 to pave a mile of road. Today, it's about $100,000 to pave that same mile. Think about the cost of, we just were having a meeting, think about the cost of right-of-way that you're having to deal with on some of the things that you have to do. The value of real estate has gone up exponentially, and so that's part of our costs, you know, the cost of, everything that we do has gone up. And so we're faced with a dilemma that we have a lot of work to be done, and we're kind of in a pinch. And so we do have a long-term bill, and it did get passed in December, and it did give us a little bit of an increase. We've got about 2% a year increase. And about half our money, a little bit more than half our money, comes from the federal government. But I want to say, it doesn't come from the federal government. It comes from us. You know, that's money that we've paid as we buy gasoline, and it goes up to the federal government, and it goes to the big federal highway department, and it comes back with a lot of strings attached to it. And we all know that, but it's our money. So we do everything we can, Paul's in charge of it. We do everything we can to make sure we get every single penny that we've paid back, so we can put it into roads in Tennessee, and we do that. And then we have money from, we have state revenue that comes in, same thing through the gas tax. And when you do a vehicle registration, you pay a fee, and some of that comes to us as well. So about, in our budget, it's about $1.8 billion a year, so just kind of for revenues. We'll go on to the next slide. So, back in the summer, the governor and I went on a 15-city tour, and we started, we met with lots of people on a 15-city tour, and we started asking them, okay, what projects do you think you need in your community? What are things that are important to you? And we had a pretty good list already established here, that if we didn't have a good list, we wouldn't be doing our jobs very well. But we wanted to listen, and the governor wanted to listen, to see what's going on. And so the first thing that we talked about was, we have a backlog list. So what is a backlog list? So a backlog is a list of projects that we have spent some money on. Now, a project is, and the city people are learning that projects just don't get built instantaneously. They take a lot of planning, that you've got to deal with federal highways, you've got to deal with environmental issues, you've got to design them, you've got to buy right-of-way, which in and of itself can take years and years and years to do. So we have our projects in a whole bunch of different phases, and they're all along and continue from the very beginning to getting ready to start construction. And so that's what our backlog is. There's $6.1 billion worth of road projects in our backlog. And again, those are projects we've already identified, that we've already spent money on. 181 projects in 62 counties. So we've gone to the next list, and we also developed needs, these are projects that we know need to be done, and there's some on there that aren't on there. There's one in this community that's probably not on there that needs to be on there, and we'll have to address that as we go forward. But it's about $5.3 billion, and I'll tell you that, and this is the interesting thing. So if we do nothing, if we increase, if we keep the revenue exactly the way it is, as far as per-gallon gasoline, we won't complete our backlog list until the year 2034. We won't even start on any of the new project lists until about 2023, won't start building them until 2035, and it's going to be somewhere in the year 2060 before we could complete the new project list. That's just based upon current revenue, using a little bit of inflation factor on easy math, which makes sense where it is. And we think that communities in the state of Tennessee need to move that up a little bit, that we are in a situation right now, and I used this example a little earlier. Most of us know what it's like when we say, we don't want to be the next Atlanta. And, I mean, everybody's been through Atlanta, most people have. You don't want to go through Atlanta during rush hour. You try to avoid Atlanta at all costs and all expenses. We don't want to be the next Atlanta. Well, what happened? Atlanta had huge growth, and whether we like it or not, we're going to have huge growth. It's coming. And there's not a thing we can do about it, and a lot of people embrace it. Your city's going to experience as much growth as any city there is percentage-wise in the state of Tennessee. We just heard that we think that you all have the lowest unemployment rate maybe in the United States, which is really, really positive. And that means you're going to attract more people and more businesses, and so we're going to have to deal with the growth, and it's hard to do it. But we want to make sure that we don't, we have to, the infrastructure has to stay up with that growth. And if you get further and further behind, it's just harder and harder to catch up. And so we're really concerned about that. So I just kind of quickly just talk about, you know, projects that we've seen. So in Murray County, we're going to break it up between Murray and Williamson County, just in this area. There's a lot of projects in Williamson County that are in the Franklin-Brentwood area, and I know you all really care about them. But we have three projects in the backlog list, 31 new projects in the, 31 new projects and 166 million, and they'll show, the next slide will kind of show briefly. So in, as an example, a lot of the purple ones, all the purple ones are bridges. And while they're not hugely expensive, because there's a whole, how many bridges we got in our plan, Paul?
About 462 on local roads.
462 bridges just on local roads, and those are areas that we don't normally, you know, we don't normally do any work on local roads except for bridges. But we, we're a pretty wet state, and bridges are critical to transportation, because when you, if a bridge goes down, there's always a huge, long detour to get around. You can't just go around the bridge. You have to deal. We want to make sure that bridges are safe and that they're functional, and a lot of our bridges are over 50 years old. And being older than 50, you know, you start to fall apart pretty quick after that. And we've got to make sure that our bridges are safe. We've got to make sure that our school buses and our emergency vehicles can drive over those bridges. And so that's a critical piece on what we do. And so, I don't want to get in my little cheat sheet right here, but what one is, is that 99, is that where that is? Do you play?
Number one, your first.
Number one is?
US 40.
US? Paul knows all those numbers. I don't know all those numbers. I was a lot better than Franklin when we talked about that stuff. Bear Creek, that's right, where the Burger King is. Isn't that right? I stop there all the time. I have a friend that owns those two hotels that are right there. So, I mean, just as an example of the project, so that one's the number, number two is Duplex Road. You all know a little bit about that. We had a great conversation about Duplex Road. We're partnering with the city of Spring Hill. The city's buying the right-of-way, doing the design work, and then we're going to build the construction. We're going to build the project when they get ready. We think, what'd we say, November 17, and that's what we think that will get happening. So that's a great project. And number three is a kind of a road between Murray, between Murray and Brentwood County, State Route 6, 433. A big project, though, it's 6.49 miles, and costs about $60.5 million on it. So the next slide talks a little bit about Williamson County. Seven backlog projects, 16 new projects that are costing $457 million. And you add those numbers, those numbers add up really, really quick when you start thinking, because, you know, road projects are very, very expensive. But in this one, again, a whole bunch of bridges that are involved in it. I think the most important roads that are in your kind of way, again, is Duplex Road, which is one of them. Highway 96 really is probably an important road for you all, and because it ties into 840, which is an important road as well. Part of our plan is to four-lane, four and five, this is just four-lane, I guess, 96.
Funding, but basically it's going to improve the two-lane road from to a four-lane or five-lane. I think we're going to back off on the divided highway and keep it more.
But all the way from Franklin to Murfreesboro, because that's a huge corridor that, you know, we did, we did know that 840 took a lot of traffic off of 96, but there's still a lot of people driving on 96. And you take, all you got to do is take Franklin, Brentwood, Spring Hill, and Murfreesboro, and you've got so much growth in that corridor. And with all the stuff that's going on in Cool Springs, and with the new stuff that's going on at the Goose Creek exit, and all the developments going in there, there's going to be a lot of traffic going backwards and forth. And so they're going to kind of use both of those roads, and so we think that's an important part. So we've got these projects like this all over the state. These are the some that are most important to you all. And what we're trying to do is let everybody know that we want to do them. These are your projects. These are projects, as I said, that they won't make much difference to me. I've got, you know, three years to finish my career here at T-Dot, and then I'm gone. And so, but we know that, and the governor will tell you, that we think that, you know, our job, any person's job, whether they're elected or not, quite frankly, but all your own's job in life is to leave it, leave this world a little bit better off than when you got here. It makes a positive impact, whatever that might be, maybe your church, or whatever it is. But an elected official, I think we're handed something, and our job is to make whatever we're handed a little bit better, to move the little needle positively. And so our job, my job, is to try to make sure that I leave this department in good shape, and that we have a funding program for these projects. So for the next 20 years or 25 years, we can be building these projects. After the last road program was 1986, so it's been 30 years since we've had a road program at all. That's a long time. The government wants to have a healthy discussion about transportation and funding transportation. We talked a little bit about it last night in the State of the State address. We'll continue to have those conversations. And what we wanted to do is kind of let people across the state kind of know what we're doing, and to get the encouragement of your elected officials that we're going about it in the right way, and to maintain our partnerships, and that's critical, because at the end of the day, the road systems are local, they're your roads, and we want to work with you to make sure that we can provide the best possible roads that we can afford. So I will stop right there. That's really the extent of my formal presentation, and we'll be glad to answer. I've got a whole plethora of people that can answer questions if you have.
Yes, sir.
Will 840 ever become an interstate?
You know, actually, we've already made the request to get that accomplished, so that'll take, you've got to do it.
Well, there's a process to do that. The Commissioner assigned the paperwork, sent it over to the federal highway administration. We have to change some signs. I would expect it to be sometime in midsummer that we'll be able to make the sign, decide changes. In doing that, we think it'll help spur economic development along the corridor, which was the original purpose of the facility.
And we think it'll actually help pull traffic out of Nashville, because we know for a fact that there's a lot of mapping things that will take, will take trucks, and they'll only take them on interstates, and since that's not an interstate, they just bypass 840. So make sure we get full utilization, try to get those big tractor-trailers out of downtown Nashville. So we're excited about getting that.
Do you get more federal money out of doing that?
No. We actually, that road was built with all-state money, as a matter of fact. Now, we're using federal dollars to, we're already repaving parts of it, because it's old enough to do that, but we're using federal dollars for that. Anything else? Yes, sir. There we go. Go ahead.
The governor said no back increase on gas?
The governor has not said, no, the governor did not say that.
Oh, sorry. I thought that was in the news.
This year, our, what the governor has done is, you know, we think it's important to have the conversation. We think it's important to tell everybody about the needs across the state of Tennessee, and we want to hear from you all, but we also want our legislators to know that there are needs for roads across the state, and we like for you all to tell, and center up, we're not trying to put you in a hot seat, but, you know, ultimately, they're the ones that have to vote for anything. The governor has not presented a bill yet, and, you know, likely, probably wouldn't do anything until next year unless the tea leaves change a little bit in the next month or so. But we're having those conversations, and we're talking about it. And so the governor did propose, back in 2005 or '06 during the Breton administration, to balance the budget, they took a little over $260 million from the Transportation Fund to balance the general fund budget. And so in this year's budget, the governor has proposed to pay half of that back to us, which would be $130 million, which will help. I mean, we're glad to get anything else back that we can. But you can just look at the value of the projects in your counties around here and know that $130 million, while it's a lot of money, in our world doesn't go very far. So it actually is like one big project.
I lived in San Francisco, California for 40 years, and several of the counties there, when the goings were good, they increased the tax by just a quarter of a percent or an eighth of a percent, and you'd be surprised, but just doing it for five years, what they accomplished in roads.
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised at all. We've done it, man. Yes?
Yes, sir. When you speak in terms of approved budgets or things in terms of 2040 plan, and let's say there's a project approved within that plan, does that mean that there is a certain timeline assigned to that project, or is it supposed to happen sometime before the year 2040? Is that?
Well, you know, we have, we have horizon years, and so we have projects, and we want to get them completed by a certain time. And so what we do, we have, but we have different, we have basically three stages of funding of a project. We really have the right-of-ways, I mean, the environmental stage, so that's the beginning part. So we actually go to the legislature, and we present what we call a three-year plan, and we build, we design and work on projects on three-year intervals. So every year, we present a three-year plan. The first year is a project that we're pretty sure that we're going to get started, I mean, under construction, or do whatever we say we're going to do in that first year. And then, and then funding, though, is always an issue. And so, and we don't, you know, there are no projects that are funded to build right now unless they're in the first-year plan, and are in previous first-year plans. So, you know, we can start a project, and a lot of times we'll hear, well, we used, you know, the previous commissioner said this was going to be built, and the funds are available, and this, that, and the other, but oftentimes, that's not the case. We don't just set money aside. We don't want to take money and put it to a project that might not start in 10 years, when we could use that money today to build another project, right? Because our goal is to get the money out. So, but a lot of it has to do with scheduling. Right-of-way can take anywhere from a short period of time, if it's what's called a categorical exclusion, to a long period of time, I mean, 15 or 20 years. We've got a project right now, we've been in the environmental process for well over 20 years, I think. And I don't know if we'll ever get it built. We argue within ourselves whether we should do it or not. It's a critical road, but it goes through, goes through a federal park, and it's difficult to do. But then we do our design and our right-of-way, and then we do, and then we do construction. Those are the three phases.
I will say, Commissioner, to, one of the questions that communities see probably in the transportation groups, talk to us about the 2040 plan, these horizon years. Those are planning documents that guesstimate what type of funding is going to happen for the next 25 or 30 years. There is a fiscal constraint requirement that you can't just wish for the world, it needs to be based on some type of financial model. But they're just planning tools. For us to get to the construction phase that the Commissioner talked about, our projects have to be in the plan, but every project in the plan, we might not have even started on yet. So, but the purpose of those planning is to give communities the ability to look at land use. at land use, you know, issuing building permits and all that kind of stuff, kind of gives you a flavor of what's going to be coming, but it doesn't necessarily mean.
Let me interrupt quickly on, on what, what your city people are doing. You, you've just adopted a thoroughfare plan, a long-term thoroughfare, you've probably got a long-term planning, long-term planning document. They're doing everything they need to do to, to make sure that you're, they're prepared for what's going on. I mean, there's lots of cities that don't do that. And, and it's critical that, and, and it's critical for us to understand, and it's critical that we partner with that. We actually have a whole department within our organization, we started when I got there, called the Office of Community Transportation, OCT. And I cannot tell you how many times, what, what would happen is, is a city will create a huge issue, and then come to us and say, you got to solve our problem. And, and we've got a lot of places that cities want us to build a bypass to a bypass that we already built, because they did a horrible job in their land planning. And so, now that bypass has got so much traffic on it and all sorts of cuts, that they don't want to do that. Or they put a school without any consideration of, of traffic and how you're going to get people there, or some wrong side of, because schools oftentimes, they take the cheapest piece of property they can find, because they want to put their money in bricks and mortar, not in land. And so, they'll take a, somehow donate a piece of property to them, or it's on the wrong side of a railroad track, or whatever's cheap, and then they come to us and say, now, we've got this huge problem, and you got to help us create them. And, and we, we're saying, well, you know, we didn't create the problem. And so, so we're having some, so we've got a department that actually goes out to communities and helps them look at their long-range planning. And yours, the city, has already done that, and, and, you know, our planning people are aware of it, and so, it's a great partnership. And so, like Duplex Road is, is a great example of, of your city and, and the state working together for a project that's well-needed, and partnering financially, which helps it get, get it off the road. Because we try to leverage our dollars, so if a city has a wherewithal to add a little something to the project, provide the right-of-way dollars, do the work, it, it helps us, because then we're, we're leveraging our dollars with, with local dollars, and it makes us utilize those dollars a lot better, and it gets the project done quicker. So you should be very thankful for your leadership here, they're, they're doing a really great job. Thank you. Go ahead.
Highway thirty-one. I know everybody wants to know about Highway thirty-one. Has it made it to the environmental phase, or is it even on anything beyond the radar?
It's, it's on the radar, but not beyond the radar, but it's going to be. So, and, and we're going to have to figure that out, but as I was driving down thirty-one today, late, I wasn't late until I got on thirty-one. And you know, you know, do you mind if I tell a little quick story? I love telling stories. So we went, we're in Irwin, Tennessee, about four or five years ago, and we, we do bus tours, and then we come through Spring Hill on bus tours. I like, and sometimes I like to travel across the state and, and talk to people, meet legislators, local elected officials, and we like to look at projects that we're doing. And so, there was a, there's, there were, in Irwin, which was, has a big CSX terminal there, though they subsequently shut it down, but they had a big CSX terminal, and they had two or three railroad tracks that were separated by about, oh, maybe a couple hundred yards, and a road in between. And, and sometimes those trains would be going different directions, and they'd stop it all up. And they were saying, and they wanted us to build a bridge over the railroad tracks. So, we, we went over one railroad track, and we stopped and got out of the bus, and we were looking around, and the senator was there, talked to us. And at the same time, here came another train the other way, and we were there for thirty minutes in between those two railroad tracks. And I know that they planned that. There's, there's a movie with Chevy Chase called Animal Farm, and they're trying to sell their farm, and there's a little scene where they go, cue the deer. So at T-Doc, we always say, cue the deer. So you cued the deer today for, for me coming down thirty-one. You know, it, it definitely, the project has to be done. Now, I will say, as, as you, you work on your access to I sixty-five, and, and if that happens and moves forward, that will have a huge impact on Highway thirty-one. But it is a road that needs to be done. I categorically agree with that. So we're, we're going to have to.
And how will six, at sixty-five access impact thirty-one?
Well, that people will go to, what's the, what's the Buckner Road, and, and to, to get off the interstate to go into Spring Hill rather than get off at Mack Hatcher and go down. So, so I, I think that will create a whole lot of other opportunities. But thirty-one is also where all your retail is, and, I mean, you know, and going from here to Franklin, that's also going to be a, a big corridor. So it, it's a corridor that we absolutely have to look at, without question. Yes, ma'am.
I'm trying to understand how you prioritize your projects. For instance, you brought up Highway ninety-six, which is an east-to-west road, and Highway thirty-one is north-to-south. That seems like that would take priority over, you know, because we get so many accidents on sixty-five that they're diverted on the Highway thirty-one, and the traffic is, is backed up.
Yes. I mean, and, and I agree with that. So, so what, what we, what we do, prioritization is a question that, that is, is important. In fact, I, we, we are continually trying to develop how we prioritize projects. Our number one criteria is safety, and, and, you know, and we look at that more than anything else. There are people that are dying on roads, and we want to make sure that those are the roads we fix, fix first. The second one is, is congestion. And I don't know what the safety, I don't know what the fatality ratio is on thirty-one, but, and one, one person told me, said, nobody dies on that road because they don't go faster. So, there's some truth. But congestion and then economic development, those are our three top priorities. And then, and we have a rating structure, and, and, you know, we, we have an algorithmic program that kind of ranks all those things, and then we look at them. So we have an objective standpoint and then a subjective standpoint to, to look at them. Always, always questionable, because, and I don't mean it's bad, everyone thinks their road is, is more important than somebody else's road, and, and it is to you, so there's no question about it. So, we have to look at those roads all over the state. But look, I, I, I know how important thirty-one is, and, and what it, and I told them earlier, and I'm bragging, is that a week ago Friday, I actually drove the snowplow to clean Highway thirty-one from, from Franklin to, to Spring Hill, and, and four thirty-one as well. So I drove that road and knew what, knew what it was like. And so, you know, it, it's something that we're going to have to work on, without question. Yes.
There actually is a traffic model that shows that the connection to sixty-five does not have a whole lot of effect on thirty-one. I personally disagree with it. I don't see how that's not possible, but it does exist. One thing that I have, I, I agree that some widening on thirty-one is necessary, but I've also been a very vocal person when it comes to just widening thirty-one is not a answer.